It is 5:30 on July 23rd, 2025. I'll call this meeting of the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next we have roll call. Tomac.
Here.
Wald.
Here.
Zachmeyer?
Yes.
L?
Here.
Buckley?
Here.
Braun?
Present.
Berger?
Here.
Roar?
Here.
Everyone is here. All right. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add something at the end. Pass it down. Basically, the policy that was adopted by the county commission regarding North Dakota Century Code 440420, which is the requirement about having a public comment period. And the way I would interpret the law anyway is that even this board would have to have a public comment period for anything anybody wants to talk about on this agenda and the previous agenda from the previous month. But this was, this has to be, this policy had to be approved and it goes, the state law goes into effect August 1st. So, standing it out and anybody would like to visit about it, we can visit at that time. It shouldn't take long at all.
Is this just information and it's...
Kind of, yes, but it's a...
It's forthcoming.
It's one of the, there's a little bit, is this board make, you know, doesn't make the final decisions, it's a recommending board. Like, park board's going to have to do this because some of the decisions they make there are final. Here, every decision we make still has to go to county commission for approval. So, does that law then actually affect this board? My interpretation of it is that it does, and I don't want to be the one that cuts the hairs of whether it does or doesn't.
So, assuming that's something you want to talk about, then...
Yep. So, we can talk about it at that point.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from June 25th.
Move to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number one, Natalie.
Reminder to Becky and Maria that when my slides are up, we can't hear you, but I'll try and remember to cycle through. Our first item is the Lenny subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 10, township 140, north range 84 west. This is located north of Sweetbrier, but all the way almost to the Oliver County border, so east of County Road 84. The applicant is Darlene Lenny. It is a request for one residential lot of 2.03 acres. As you can see, everything around it, this is the proposed lot here, everything around it is agricultural in nature. We have a lot, a non-conforming lot that has a cemetery on it in that half section, and then we have a non-conforming lot that has a residence on it, and then there is a residence on the proposed lot. So, that would equate to the second buildable lot in that half section if this were to get approved. So, that is in conformity with our policy. The current home that is on the proposed subdivision has Missouri West Water Service and Morgansu Power, so those utilities are already in place. So, this would be 50-foot access and utility easement to get to this proposed lot. The private drive is already established, so that goes past the other, the other non-conforming residential lot. And I did inquire with the applicant and ask them if they want to just go ahead and make that other residence, residence conforming. They said that they don't, which is okay. That's their choice. So, this would just be for the one lot with a home on it and a zone change from ag to residential. And I can take any, the staff is recommending approval, and I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Where is the cemetery?
It's way far north from here.
Give it here.
It's little. So, this is the proposed lot, and then it's...
It's that one there?
It's all the way up there.
Okay, so it's not part of this?
No, no. I'm just, I more so was counting lots within the quarter, you know, for just an overview of what is there.
Who owns that cemetery?
I think it was the Lutheran Church. I had it on my mailing list. I don't recall.
So, Natalie, when you look at the other map that you gave us...
Mm-hmm.
What's that area to the, way on the north edge?
You mean the crop? Or the tilled area?
No, right, way north on the edge, straight north of the house, right where your finger, there.
That?
Yeah, what's that?
Good question. Rock pile?
That's what I would guess.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like rock, very large rock pile.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a, it's not a structure.
Okay, I just was curious.
Yeah. Yeah, that is, that's a big area.
Other questions for Natalie? Maria and Becky, any questions?
I'm good. Nothing here.
Okay, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing. First call for the hearing. Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I will close the hearing. Ready for motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Lenny subdivision and a zoning map amendment from ag to residential as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
I was going to put this up on the overhead, but it's a whole page, so it's hard to read. You all have it in your packet. This is revisiting the meat processing facility ordinance and what I thought would make a lot more sense, because we're very unlikely to ever see a really big one, just, just deal with the, the minor meat processing and not split hairs about anything bigger, since that's sort of the immediate concern. So, I took out major meat processing and just have left in the minor, which would be no more than 24 head or 24 animal units a week. And that was, I think, the applicants who are looking to put together a facility down by St. Anthony, they thought 12 is all the more that they're going to get to. And if they doubled that capacity, you know, you'd be at 24. So, we kind of had that discussion, and they thought that was a good number to, that, you know, if they grow or have an operation in the county that's anything like them, you know, that 24 isn't going to limit them. That's probably all that we would be likely to see. I guess my, my main question is, you know, certainly, we should have a special use permitting process for this type of facility so that we can review and we can impose conditions if necessary in terms of septic systems and so forth and support Western Plains. But I guess the question would be, right now, we only allow them in industrial. And, you know, so I guess I just put that question out. Do we, could we also allow it in ag as long as it's getting a special use permit, you know, only by special use permit? I just put that out as a question.
Because the one that, this one that is proposed...
It's in...
This would be in ag.
Yeah, at the moment, basically, it would save them having to plat at all, because they would be the only lot in that plat. And if they have to rezon to industrial, they have to plat it, because you have to define what the boundary of your new zone is, and it seems like a whole lot of to do, you know, if that's the only thing that's going in there. So, that was a thought. And I guess I would, the context here, I think that they are getting pretty close to wanting to move forward with something, and so I think we have looked at this quite a bit. I think it would be a good idea, potentially, if we can bring it to county commission after this for a review, so that we can have something in place at whatever point in time they would be ready to apply.
It's coming next month.
Yeah, it's coming next month.
Did you want to put them up?
Oh, yeah.
Before I say something? So, Mr. Chairman, now I forgot what I was going to say.
Take a moment.
Yeah, give me a minute here. I was going to ask a question or say something. Oh, I know what I was going to ask. Did you ever hear back anything from Kurt Hartman?
No, I had emailed him, you know, he gave me his info.
Yes.
And I had emailed him and didn't hear back, and I would imagine he's a busy person.
Yeah.
But we did get to chat.
Yes.
You know, after the, the meeting, and I felt with him and his son and, you know, that was kind of where that 24 number came from. And, and it seemed like the biggest issue was probably just, that we had left to deal with and address was really just the inedible portion.
Right.
And what our standards are for that. And I talked to environmental quality, you know, waste. And I did find a really good resource through, I think, Cornell University, you know, geared more for New York, upstate New York. But, you know, so we, in North Dakota, if you're going to compost, you know, because I think to myself, you know, anybody who has a meat processing plant here, if they want to get it picked up, it's got to get shipped all the way to Minnesota.
Minnesota, yeah.
And that's a long way. And if somehow that route ever stopped, what option are they going to have? They're going to have to compost or do something else. And I think, you know, obviously, that can go really wrong if you're, you know, the composting method, if you're not being very methodical about it. And the state standard for your organic material that goes over, whether it's sawdust, wood chips, cardboard, you know, whatever, it's only six inches. And like, the guide that I had found for upstate New York is like, two feet. So, that's what I put in here, was two feet. But I think in all likelihood, they are probably just going to get it picked up. But if that changes, I think, especially if you're that close to other people in St. Anthony or somewhere like that, you kind of have a responsibility to be very, very careful.
Well, can we cross that bridge if we have to come to it?
Um, yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're applying and that is what's in their special use permit, that they're going to get it picked up, you know, then that's what we would approve them for. But I put it in here, I mean, what I have in this draft is they can choose one of the following methods, either transport it offsite, and if they do, they have to refrigerate the inedible until it gets picked up. You know, they can't just obviously leave it out. And then either, or that, or it would have to get composted or incinerated. And if they choose the compost or incinerate method, then DEQ, they have to get a permit through...
They've got to get through them.
Exactly.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, I, I would not mind having a little bit stricter standards than even what DEQ has. And I have an email into them to see if we can have stricter standards.
I know a farmer out there that did a lot of composting with livestock, so, and I don't know how thick he made his, because he would do a whole animal.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yeah, and that was what the, the resource that I was looking at, it was for larger scale operations, you know. Have a foot, you know, you got your base layers like a foot and a half, then you have a foot between carcasses, and then you got two feet on the outside. Then you leave it for four to six months, and then check it and turn it. And then I did put the acres in here, their recommendation for, they said .3 acres per that 20 animal units, and I put .4 just to have some wiggle room in there. You know, as they're doing their site plan, that's kind of the minimal area that they would need for composting if that's the method they choose to use.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty sure that when they purchased the facility in New Salem, that they did buy some extra land there in case they would have to...
They needed to do that.
They would have to do that. So, I don't know how much, but that's, that's in their plan as well. So...
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yep.
Uh, I, I think a special use permit in ag is allowable.
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we allow a minor meat processing plant by right in industrial?
And that was something that I was looking at. And then after talking to Western Plains about septic, it, I think that for us to have a permit that we can suspend if they're not abiding by what they need to, you know, as far as standards, I think we have perhaps better leverage than just having customer, or Western Plains out there on their own trying to enforce a septic permit when there are some things that I have put in here that isn't in their code as being enforceable. So, I think it's going to be helpful for us to have that extra layer of permitting. And, you know, everybody, I think everybody tries to be good actors, but it's just, you just don't know. You know, you kind of have your regulations for the situations where people are not taking care of things so well. Otherwise, we wouldn't have to permit things at all. So, that was the motivation, was just to have another extra layer of permitting so that we can keep tabs on it. I guess I feel pretty good about this. We've, we've looked at it a lot. I would not feel comfortable with this for a larger facility. That's going to be a lot more, a lot more consideration. But again, I don't think we're ever going to see one here, so I'm not worried about it. I guess the only other thing I'd bring up is that to ask them to do a detailed site plan, that might be a bit cumbersome for a small-scale operator, but I still think that's important to get the, you know, the drainage, you know, your terrain, make sure that you really do have enough room for all the components that you expect to have on it, and just forces people to be very thorough. So...
So, then would we add the ag part under Part B, under permitted districts then, Natalie?
Right. Yeah. If, if that's something that the commission thinks is reasonable, and I guess I, I think that's reasonable as long as it's going through special use permit for a minor one, that we would just add that and say, in Part B, minor meat processing facility may be permitted in the ag or industrial district by special use permit.
Okay.
Other comments? Questions for Natalie? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. First call for the hearing. Second call for the hearing. Third and final call for the hearing. And I will close the Other thoughts from the board? Ready for motion?
I would move that we recommend to the county commission to accept the Morton County Land Use Code Amendment, Section 5-270 for minor meat processing plants with the addition of or agricultural district by special use permit.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Item number three, Andy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this will be brief. North Dakota Legislature, this last legislative session passed North Dakota Century Code 440420, which is, was also known as Senate Bill 2180. And basically, it's now required that there has to be a public comment period during public meetings such as this. And the public comment, anybody then can comment on anything on this agenda plus the previous agenda. The county commission said that the, we should have the public comment period at the end of the meeting, because as items are called, the people that want to visit about those items should be allowed to speak during those items instead of trying to control their speech at the beginning of the meeting and then not allowing them to speak later on. Now, this board, everything we pretty much do is covered by public hearing. But I didn't want to split hairs about whether this law applies to this board or not. So, I believe it does, but that's just my belief. So, as a board, if the board by consensus would want the state's attorney opinion on whether this law applies to this board, because all our decisions have to go to the county commission for final approval or denial anyway, or just follow it. It's the approved policy of the county commission. And then every meeting, the very last agenda item would be public comment period under North Dakota Century Code 440420. And it would be the same thing, call for public comment three times. But if we had a real controversial project and somebody tried to filibuster, this, this one can be controlled. And the chairman would be in his rights. I think they're allowed a minimum of three minutes and can be cut off. So, basically, does the board want to get in an attorney general or secretary, state's attorney's opinion on if this applies to this board, or do we, do you just want to accept it, add it, and let's see how it goes?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zachmeyer, I can address that. I got an email from Chase Lingle, Assistant State's Attorney, and 4404-7.1. The definition of a governing body means that the multi-member body responsible for making a collective decision on behalf of a public entity. A governing body also includes any group of persons, regardless of membership, actively, oh, excuse me, acting collectively pursuant to authority delegated to that group by the governing body. So, that's the definition of the governing body. And so, I, I'd say that we, yes, we are obligated.
Obligated.
Yes. And so, I don't think we have to get in a...
Okay.
Chase sent that to me, and so, because I asked that question last night.
Yep, you did. And, so...
Mr. Chairman, committee members, I don't think this is going to be too cumbersome, because there's a lot of discretion given to the chairman. I mean, the presider has control, you know, they can control how many minutes to talk. This is not one of the things that's been into a lot of debate, you know. So, I like the way it's put out in terms of giving the chairman, president, the discretion to, to control these things, keep them within a certain context, timeframe, all that. So, it can be very easily controlled, so it doesn't get out of hand.
Andy, I'm just trying to also read through this. You mentioned that they could only talk about something on that night's agenda or the previous agenda. Is that in this policy?
Yes.
Where's...
It's, it's in here.
Okay.
But, yeah, that, the state law is specific. There's only two, anything from the previous. So, if they, at the end of the meeting stood up and said, "I missed the meeting that we guys visited about minor meat processing, and that was the previous meeting, we got to give them time to talk about it." Now, it's two, three months down the line, and they stand up and say, "Well, I want to readdress that." Well, no, that wasn't on this agenda, and then it wasn't on the last agenda, so now you're out of order.
Yeah, no, that makes sense to me. I just, in skimming this, I didn't see where it's at.
Looks like number, number two, second page. It looks like 2C.
Oh, from the current meeting or the previous? Got it. Okay. Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's got to be confined to topics, too. They just kind of bring something out of the blue that we haven't been put on a agenda to discuss. You know, it just can bring something new and insert that into, to the night's meeting.
Then my other question is going to be, in number two, it requires them to submit a speaker card. Is that, is that something we would then intend to start implementing?
Yeah, we'd have to, we have to come up with a county...
Exactly, Dennis.
A county card. They had them in California. Like, you'd have to, I think they have them in a lot of states where you have like thousands or, you know, hundreds of people at a meeting. And so, you have like, you have to fill them out. You fill out your name, address, you fill out what you're going to say, and then you give it to, you know, before the meeting even starts.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe to flag, like, we'd have to change, if that's the policy we're going to adopt, we'd have to sort of change how we do things. And it also allows them to email it to the chairman, but we don't provide board, chairman, email addresses.
Yep.
So, that makes it a bit challenging.
It could be emailed to the auditor, it could be emailed to Natalie.
Sure.
They just have to notify you.
Yeah. Right. It has to get to you some way. Yeah. Like, so that we could take it and give it to you.
So, then in that case, we wouldn't be like calling for public comment if we hadn't received a card ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
That kind of goes away.
That, to me, that makes sense. I mean, especially because, so we have our public hearings for anything that's on the agenda already, you know, so people can just, they don't have to do cards for that. But if they want to do a card for something that was on the last meeting... But if they want to do a card for something that was on the last meeting, then they'd have to submit that card ahead of time or email.
That's probably a good thing because if we have a fiery topic one night and then we move on to the next item, then we'd get to the end and people could potentially then rehash that earlier item.
But then they would have had to submit the card at the beginning of the meeting.
No, that's what, that's what I'm saying. That's why I kind of like that.
Yeah, I like it, too.
And that's why we moved it to the end because if we did it up front, somebody all of a sudden filibusters, refuses to leave the podium 'cause they have a right to speak. And YouTube is full of those videos. Pretty soon, we gotta call sheriff's deputies down to drag them away. Put it at the end and then, you know what, we're adjourned.
Yep.
Goodbye. They standing there.
Yeah.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, that this law, Senate Bill 1280, was designed because some counties, cities, or organizations were not allowing the public to speak. It wasn't designed for Morton County. We've pretty much established that because we've been really good about making sure that everybody can speak if they come to the meeting. And so there was some issues and so that's why it has come up. And now it's state law.
I believe Burley County at one point was doing the, well, I'm sorry, but you missed the, the public speaking period at the beginning of the, of the meeting, so we're not gonna let you speak.
There's been school boards that have, you've come to the meeting and they said, "Oh, you didn't check with us beforehand. You don't get to speak at the meeting. We won't hear any of your issues," even if it was on, an issue on the agenda.
Yeah, Morton County boards, I don't know of any of them that have tried to do that. But they should speak at the moment that item is up. And Dickinson had a problem, right, so where I think they put on there about giving the chairman some leeway, too. Dickinson had a gentleman coming and to virtually every meeting. And during that public comment period, he tried to take it over with all his political beliefs. And that had nothing to do with the city of Dickinson. And they ended up having to shut him down and removing him. But that's, because of all that, that's where this, I'm sure, came from.
So based off the, the definition that Jackie read, I assume this would also apply to committees that are formed, like the, the DAC committee?
Possibly.
Yeah. Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's been going well. People have kind of submitted questions beforehand or we give time at the end. You know, it's like, okay, we need to have our discussion, but then here's five minutes at the end. If you have questions, you can submit them. So I feel like that's been working well.
Totally, yeah.
So we don't need to make a motion or anything, I don't feel, Mr. Chairman? Because this is something that the county commission has already put into place?
And so we'll implement this, though, then, next month, right?
Natalie, would you speak briefly about our meeting tomorrow?
So we had our couple public hearings, or, one, to be honest. About the DAC draft. I think it was one. Yeah, it's been a while. We had one, one public meeting and I took notes and revised the draft and then sent it out to the committee members. I posted it online. So anybody who wants to read the draft can read it online. And then we will be meeting virtually tomorrow at 1:30. And because that is a static address, I didn't want to just put it out online because that can be troublesome. So I said, if anybody wants that, to attend virtually, I will send them the link, you know, directly to them. And a couple people asked for that. So there will be a couple people attending the meeting. The public will be muted through the meeting, but then at the end, we'll take them off mute if they have questions. So, yeah. And I guess, and I would say, I've been working on a solar ordinance so that, and I think it's, I mean, a lot of it is repeats from, like, our DAC draft is gonna be the core of what gets pasted into other industrial, you know, rural industrial uses. So I did paste quite a bit into a solar ordinance, but I think, I think I'm pretty close. So if that wraps up before our meeting tomorrow, I might just give it to you guys, you know, or, or maybe incorporate it somehow so that if they decide they're not gonna use gas generators for this project, then we have expectations for solar, if that's the energy resource they choose to use. And then, then we'll start working on data centers, but I'm just, yeah. We're almost there with the solar. Lucky you guys.
So will we have another public hearing?
Here.
Here, next month on the DAC?
That's my plan. Yeah, okay, that's my plan. 'Cause it wasn't, it wasn't that much extra information to go through, you know, with the committee. I think we'll probably have some minor changes and then, and then we can bring it back in August and then maybe send it to county commission?
Anything else from the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.